This time I'd like to recognize Mr. Jimmy Rogers to lead us in our invocation, immediately followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Board members, please rise for your prayer.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, again, we want to thank you for the many blessings and opportunities you've given us. Lord, we want to thank you for the availability for us to be here at these meetings, to be able to make decisions for our county school. Lord, we pray that these decisions are in the best interests of our children, to give them the best education possible. We pray, Lord, that your guidance and direction is upon us, and we pray that safety is within our schools. Lord, we know we've tried hard during these tough times, this pandemic, to make sure that we continually educate children. And, Lord, we want to thank you for helping us through this and being there for us, Lord. All we've got to do is turn to you, and we know that you will help guide us and help us make the right decisions that affect the children of Haywood County. We thank you again for our staff and our teachers who have so diligently been in the class and been exciting to have children before them, to teach them, to help them learn to be the best that they can be. Now, Lord, help us to make these decisions and make the best decisions possible that gives our children of Haywood County the best education in this state and this country. And, Lord, be with this state, be with this country, be with this world. Let us all be united and work together for the same causes. God directs us in all that we do, Lord, and we give you the praise and glory for it all. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. Our next regular board meeting will be April the 19th, which is not normal for us. It's because of the schedule, the calendar. So, we're going to move it to April the 19th. So, put that on your calendar at seven o'clock here at the Education Center. And under Agenda Adjustments, we need to, I've been informed, we need to take number 10 off, and it's going to be done at the April meeting, okay? So, we're going to take that one off. And I understand that Building in the Grounds has some information for us tonight as well.
Sir, could you please add us?
We'll add you to the agenda right before the Finance Committee. 16A and 16B, we'll call them, okay?
All right, thank you, sir.
All right. Any other adjustments that need to be done? Okay. At this time, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So, may the-
Dr. Rogers made a motion. I hear a second. Mr. Kirkpatrick, any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote all those in favor. Say aye?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries unanimously. One other thing I'd like to mention tonight is we will have to recess back to closed session for some further business on personnel. We will take action after that closed session and come back at it and approve the personnel. So, we'll take a recess right after 16B, which is the finance reports. Any other announcements? All right. Next on our agenda is Ms. Kim Shipman. Ms. Shipman.
Good evening, Chairman Francis and members of the board. Each year, our elementary schools host a fourth-grade bicycle rodeo, and our PE teachers utilize the Let's Go NC pedestrian and bicycle safety curriculum, and they teach kids about safety procedures for bicycling. And you wouldn't believe that some of our fourth-grade students are getting on a bicycle for the very first time and actually learn how to ride a bike during this bicycle rodeo. Well, we had a fleet of bicycles that were very loved through the years and very used and worn, and some of them falling apart. So, I'm excited tonight because we have a brand-new fleet of 23 bicycles, and we attribute this to one of our students at Clyde Elementary School who orchestrated this great donation, and I'm going to let Byron Burnett, the principal at Clyde Elementary School, introduce and recognize this student.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I want to take an opportunity to introduce you to one of Clyde's finest, Hannah Francis. She saw a need, and she didn't wait around on someone else to do it. She, along with her family, organized a fundraiser and a donation drive to buy these bikes that Ms. Shipman has mentioned before, not only to benefit the students at Clyde, but to benefit all elementary students in Haywood County. We're very fortunate to call Hannah and her brother Lane and the entire Francis family Clyde Cardinals. Many people say that the country's future is grim, but when I look at students like Hannah, I want to ensure you that our future is very, very bright.
Hi. Hi, my name is Hannah Francis, and I'm in fifth grade. Last year in fourth grade, I participated in the bike rodeo. I brought my own bike, but the kids who didn't rode on the bikes that the school had. A lot of the bikes were old and way too big for the kids. So, that day, I went home and told my family about it, and they were interested. Then, my grandparents helped me put a fundraiser together to help buy some bikes for the bike rodeo. It mattered to me because I wanted all the kids to get to ride a bike and to get the experience. I'm excited for all the fourth graders who are doing this, to get to use these bikes and have as much fun as I had. Thank you for your time. Have a good evening.
I want to present this certificate of recognition. It said, "This certificate of recognition is awarded to Hannah Francis in recognition of your efforts in obtaining the generous donation of bicycles for Haywood County Schools, awarded the eighth day of March 2021."
Thank you all so very much for coming tonight, and Hannah, thank you for your ideas and getting fallen through on a project. And Lane, I'm sure you had a part in it as well. So, we appreciate the Francis kids coming up with the idea and doing the fundraiser. Thank you so very much. We appreciate it. Mr. Hines, you're up.
I didn't jump the line, did I? Mr. Chairman, members of the board, it is my pleasure tonight, once again, this time of year, to present to you the National Board certified candidates who have passed all their tests, presented their portfolios, and are now considered National Board certified teachers. And of course, with that goes along a pay raise from the state of North Carolina for their hard work and efforts with our students. And as we have said before, this is probably the most intensive staff development that our teachers can do to improve their skills and to better aid our students in the classroom, and we really appreciate them doing this. Tonight, we have five new candidates. One couldn't be here, but we have five new candidates tonight, and the first is Angela Duckett. We have, every year, we buy them a nice present. Typically, we buy them a frame for their certificate. They get a beautiful certificate from the National Board, but we have found they like the nameplates better, a really nice wooden nameplate for their desk that announces that they're a certified, National Board certified teacher. So, that's what's in the bag. Didn't mean to spoil it, but there you go. All right, Douglas. Douglas Hansen from Early College, graduation's date. Sarah Lee. And Jesslyn Rathbone. The fifth was Margaret Ashley Fogg Hyatt from Tuscola, and we will make sure that she gets her gift, okay? We also had 18 teachers renew their National Board certification this year, and so I'd like to read their names. We did not invite them to come tonight because of the COVID restrictions. Eighteen's a lot to try to recognize. But we certainly want you to know who they are and our public to know who they are. And so, our 18 renewals are Ronald Anderson, Armando Basulto, Samantha Burleson, Carol Clark, Melissa Collins, Jimmy Fuentes, Shannon Hansen. I think Shannon is here. There she is, right there. Congratulations, Shannon. Teresa Hines, Casey Crook, Jennifer Mahaffey, Tara O'Laughlin, Carla Phillips, Ethan Reinhardt, Carrie Russell, Joanna Sayblack, Erica Smiley, Joy Soley, and Margaret Stiles. And we've got Joy here with us, too. Come on in, Joy. Joy, as you know, helps us each year coordinate the National Board process, and we appreciate her doing that. Do you want to say something, Joy? No? Okay. She does a great job in helping them get organized, and we also have two coaches, Sandy Strawn and, yeah, Lynn Carter. I don't see her as often, but they do a great job in helping get their portfolios together, and we appreciate them as well. So, thank you, everyone. Congratulations, y'all. Good job.
Congratulations. Dr. Putnam.
Well, this has been a long, hard road, but, boy, is it good to have kids back in the building.
Amen.
Have some athletic recognition.
That's right.
So, super, super excited for that, and of those, all of our athletes have endured a lot. They've learned to persevere in some of the toughest times. And that said, these young people that we're going to recognize tonight have went even above and beyond that. So, I'll start with Tuscola High School, and I will ask Athletic Director Michael Blue to come forward and introduce, talk about coach and players. Coach Blue.
All right. Chairman Francis, members of the board, Dr. Nolte, Dr. Putnam, Ms. Barker, thank you all so much for having us out here. We've been looking forward to getting back with you all for quite some time. It's always exciting. We get to recognize our coaches and our athletes. We're just super excited about that. First, I'm going to have Coach Fitzgerald come up and talk about his cross-country ladies. I'll get his certificates here.
Good evening. It's an honor and a privilege to be able to spend a couple of minutes talking to you all here tonight about the two amazing young ladies that are student athletes at Tuscola High School. Ladies, come on in. Can we get the parents come in, too?
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah. First, I want to talk about Alicia Caldwell. She's a senior and was a captain on the cross-country team this year. She's the daughter of Jack and Marjana Caldwell, and her brother Alex, who's a football player at Dewanesville Middle School, just walked in. Alicia was an outstanding four-year runner at Tuscola High School and the lone state meet qualifier back in 2019, before all the craziness hit us. She earned all Western Mountain Athletic Conference honors this year, finishing eighth in the 2021 conference meet. As the 2019, so that was a season ago, most outstanding runner on the Tuscola cross-country team, she was primed and ready to go this year for an even better senior season. And we could tell early on that her times were off. She was dealing with some medical issues. She has a great supportive family, got stuff figured out, trusted the process, and came back and had her best race of the year at the conference meet where she finished eighth and earned those all Western Mountain Conference honors. Top 10 runners in that meet earned that honor. But, you know, in spite of that, in spite of the fact that she wasn't at her best for the entire season, she maintained a positive attitude because she was a captain and she's a senior, and she was setting an example for the other runners on this team, and it was a fairly young team as well. She encouraged her teammates. She shared her knowledge and her experience as a top-flight runner, and so she demonstrated what all of us know she is, to be an amazing human being. So, I want to present you, Alicia, with this certificate, Women's Cross Country, All Western Mountain Athletic Conference 2021. Don't leave. Next up is Eva Rinker. She's a sophomore and a captain as well, and she's the daughter of Jeremy and Joanne Rinker, and her sister, her younger sister, Gracie, is over there as well. In Eva's second year of running at Tuscola, she came out of the gate fast and strong after a summer of solid training. She was the number-one runner for the team in all six regular season meets this year, finishing first overall twice, second twice, third once, and fourth once. So, never out of the top four in all six of the regular season meets. Then, we moved on to the conference meet where she finished seventh. She and Alicia were one behind the other in that race, earning all Western Mountain Conference honors, and then moved on to finish 14th in the 3A Western Regional Meet, where she qualified as one of only four individuals for the state meet. And the next weekend, went on to Kernersville for the state meet, finished 65th overall in the entire state of North Carolina in the 3A. And the most important thing is she improved her time every meet throughout the course of the season. So, every week, she got faster. Both these young ladies are great athletes, but they're also great students. They're great teammates, daughters, siblings, and citizens. They and their teammates have endured a great deal this past year, training and competing during a global pandemic, but they did so safely and successfully, and it was a pleasure to work with both of them and their teammates, along with the boys' cross-country team as well. So, we are all grateful, not only to the parents and the family members for their support, but for Principal Heather Blackman and for Michael Blue, our Athletic Director, for their support as well. So, thank you all. And Eva, I'm going to present you with your certificate as well. Congratulations. Thank you all for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, and congratulations.
Jump in between the next awards. I'm going to brag on Coach Fitz. We've got a real gym there. He coached cross-country and swimming simultaneously and drove the bus for both teams, so he's like the Energizer Bunny.
Okay, next, I'm going to have Coach Moore come up for volleyball. This was Montana's first year with us. We stole her from the other end of the county, pretty much, I think. So, we're happy she's got that T on her face right now, and she did a phenomenal job with our ladies this year, just an enthusiasm and a positive energy that she brought, and we're really excited to have her on board. So, she's going to talk about a couple of ladies.
Dr. Nolte, Dr. Putnam, Ms. Barker, and members of the board, it's such an honor to be here tonight to recognize these two amazing athletes I have behind me. The season was very different. I'm not sure that we've ever had one quite like it before, and as a new coach, I was pretty much terrified going into the season, kind of not knowing what was going to go on and happen. But luckily, I had an amazing team to kind of trust me and to go through this process together. I had wonderful support from so many other fellow coaches, or our players, and then their families. There's too many to name, but I just wanted to take an opportunity to thank them tonight as well. But I do want to recognize these two that I have here with me. The first is Grace Lance. This past season was her last season as a senior, and I just couldn't have asked for a better player to have on my team. I often refer to her as like the light of the team because she just is such an energy and a light. She brings so much enthusiasm in to anything that she does. She's an outstanding athlete, not only in volleyball, but basketball and soccer as well. She put up great offensive and defensive stats for Tuscola throughout her career here, but beyond that, she's just everything you want in an athlete as a coach. She always has a smile on her face. She's competitive, and she's extremely coachable. She's an excellent teammate and leader, and I'm just so excited to watch her athletic and academic career grow as she continues on to Emory and Henry. So, with that, I will give you your certificate for all conferences. The second athlete I have here is Addison Wyatt. Addison Wyatt, she is a natural leader, and she's always on top of things. A lot of the times, she would see things that even before I told her to do them, she would just see them, and she would just recognize that she needed to do that for the team. She's just such a go-getter, and she has that competitive drive in her that every coach wants to see. Whether it was during practice or games, she was so disciplined and driven, and she would do whatever it was needed to be successful. This was her junior season this year, and I'm excited to go into next season with her and see how much more she can grow. So, with that, I will give you the certificate for all conferences, too. I'm so excited to have had my first coaching career here in such a great county with such great girls, and I'm just so excited to be able to honor those athletes tonight. So, thank you.
Go Mountaineers. My mic's not on.
Cut you off?
Huh?
They cut you off back there?
Cut me off. Go Mounties.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, thank you. Next, we have Ms. Heidi Morgan, our Athletic Director from Pisgah High School. She'll introduce coaches and some special young people for tonight's ceremony here.
Chairman Francis, members of the board, Dr. Nolte, Ms. Barker, and Dr. Putnam, thank you for having us here today. I certainly appreciate it. I would like to introduce McKenna Browning first. McKenna is a senior volleyball player, also softball player, who is going to be missed tremendously on the volleyball court. She finished her senior year with 1,433 assists, 487 digs, and 103 aces, which, those are great numbers, but the one that is remarkable to me is 103 aces. No one touched her serve at all. And so, even from a freshman, that's something that I can remember about her, and she has just true leadership skills on the field, on the court, and in life in general, and she's going to certainly be missed. And we've moved on to softball now. I do want to apologize for the way I'm dressed. I came straight from the field to here, so I don't know how she did it, but she managed to change really quick, and she looks really pretty, too, so I don't know how that... But, you know, McKenna, you've been a leader since you were a freshman, and we're going to miss you, and I look forward to softball season with you as well. So, I got a certificate here. Congratulations. And I forgot to mention, McKenna was all-conference for Pisgah in volleyball. Next, I have Luke Albee. Coach Hannah couldn't be here for our swim team tonight. So, Luke is a senior. He swam in the 100 free, 100 breast, and 500 free. He was all-conference and qualified for regionals in the 500 free, and Coach Hannah had nothing but positive things to say about him, and he's going to be missed as he moves on from Pisgah High School. Next, I have Luke Gonzalez. Luke is a freshman. He swam in the 50 free, the 100 backstroke. He was an all-conference selection, qualified for regionals in the 100 backstroke, and he finished fourth in regionals. And go Bears.
Go Coach Morgan, thank you. You got lights, too, at your field.
I want to say thank you so much. We're going to practice under the lights for the first time tomorrow night. We scrimmaged Tuscola Wednesday, so we're very excited, and thank you, McKenna, because she can vouch for, when we turned the lights on for the first time for the lighting ceremony, it was a very touching moment, and thank you so much for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll just brag on Coach Morgan. You can see her in a lot of places doing a lot of things, but she's always got her sleeves rolled up, ready to do the work. She's a hard worker, and we appreciate her.
Congratulations to all our outstanding athletes. Thank you so much for taking time out of your busy day to come to be recognized. We appreciate your hard work and the families as well. Thank you. Thank you. Ms. King, has anyone signed up to address the board? Okay, thank you. Board members, you've had an opportunity to read the minutes and look over the minutes from the February 8th closing regular session minutes.
Mr. Chairman.
Excuse me.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. We have a motion.
Okay.
Mr. Rogers, second by Mr. Kirkpatrick. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote all those in favor. Say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Next, we have Ms. Fox. Remodian, that's fine.
That's right. Good evening, Chairman Francis and members of the board. Thank you so much for having me tonight. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, I'm clear.
Great. Tonight, it's my pleasure to bring to you the proposed graduation dates for 2021. I think you discussed these in the work session on Thursday, but we would like to present them. We have Haywood Early College for Thursday, May the 13th, or Friday, May the 14th. That date will be determined based on the college when they make their decision. We have the Community Learning Center. Their date is June the 3rd. They have determined Smoky Mountain Event Center as their location, but the time has not yet been determined. Pisgah High School graduation will be Friday, January the 4th. Time and location to be determined. And Tuscola's will be Saturday, June the 5th. Time and location to be determined. And Central Haywood High School, Monday, January the 7th. Time to be determined, and we think that one is going to be at the Community College. As you discussed in the work session on Thursday, these locations are being discussed due to the COVID-19 restrictions, and we will come back to you at a later date to finalize locations and times. To the, you also discussed that these dates are pending no further inclement weather. We hope that this is what will happen, and these will be our graduation dates, and we did encourage that we will not have, you know, any more weather, and hopefully, we'll be able to graduate, but we do have some dates. So, at this time, we present these to you for your approval.
Okay.
Are there any questions?
Any que... I think Dr. Nolte wanted to say something.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Francis. Carol covered the thing that I wanted to say. These dates, we think, are pretty good, but we may have bad weather. So we just want to encourage anyone who may be traveling to our great community to observe a graduation, to maybe delay making their travel arrangements until spring break or so. So Carol did that for us. Thank you, Carol.
Thank you, Ms. Fox. We need a motion for approval.
Chairman, I'd make a motion that we approve the dates as presented, but the correction of Pisgah being June the 4th instead of January 4th.
Okay. We have a motion from Mr. Rogers. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Here, Mr. Burnett. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? I will make a comment. I've never seen to be determined place and time. I've been on the board a long time, but I know it's unusual times and we don't even know whether the place is going to allow people to be there or not. So we're going to approve the dates as well, I guess, when we vote here in a minute, but I just, I thought, I find that astounding. Any other comments? There being none, we'll vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Fox.
Thank you. Good evening.
You, too. Next on our agenda, board, at our work session, there was some discussion about the possibility of the board sending a letter in support of House Bill 90. We've taken and composed the letters and you've had an opportunity to look at it this evening to, House Bill 90 was introduced down in Raleigh. It's House Bill 90. It will allow Haywood County School students to return back to classroom with some restrictions. It also gives the board, doesn't take any authority away from the board. We have issues that come, arise, the board can move quickly to address those issues. And at this time, I would just like to ask for a motion in support of the letter going to support HB 90. So moved. We're going to have Mr. Burnett made the motion and seconded by Dr. Rogers, okay? It's really close, so. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor?
Chairman, I would just like to say, too, is, I know our whole state has been in turmoil and we really feel like that, or I personally basically feel like we really like to see our children get the best education possible and get the fullest education. And our teachers have been so great to work with this program and so support this bill in efforts to help get our children back into school in person, kindergarten through 12th grade. And I really want to see this, I really want to thank our legislators, too. They've been, they have been fighting for us in this district and we want, we want to see our growth continue and let's just prove to the state how good we really are. We know we're good, let's just show them how great we are, so. And Mr. Chairman, I'd like to piggyback what Mr. Rogers said. Every principal at every school and every teacher has participated to make us successful and to my knowledge, we've had no spread within our school system. It's all came in and that gives us the confidence to be able to send such a letter. And I'd also like to thank Dr. Putnam for his leadership during this time.
Any other comments? Questions? There being none, we'll vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Ms. King, would you make sure that we send that to the legislative group, Representative Mark Pless this evening and I think they're going to be voting on it tomorrow is my understanding, so we want them to get it tonight. Thank you. Next on our agenda, we have policies, second reading, a bunch of.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. These are all up for second reading. I just want to draw your attention to one, which is 1610-7800 if this policy is enacted. Following that, Jason Hines has done a great job of creating a training platform for sex trafficking. All federal law requires that we train employees now in sex trafficking. Unfortunately, this is a sign of the times and something that we have to be knowledgeable of and prepared for. And so enacting all of these policies, but specifically 1610-7800, will authorize us to move forward with training all employees per federal law.
Okay.
Any questions for me on second reading?
I'll make a motion, we approve the policies presented for second reading. Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Kirkpatrick. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Here, Mr. Rogers. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That's the way I'd like it. Thank you, Dr. Putnam. Next, I believe we have the Building and Grounds has some items to come before the board for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have several motions to bring before the board. The first being a motion from the Building and Grounds Committee to proceed with an RFP for engineering plans to correct the drainage and grading issues behind CUW to be stated.
I second that motion. We have a motion and a second. It's stated. Any questions or comments on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Second motion is to continue with the central elementary school K1 building renovations using lottery funds.
I second that motion. We have a motion from Dr. Rogers, seconded by Mr. Kirkpatrick. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor?
Just for your information, that is an estimated cost of about $250,000. However, it alleviates the need for us to spend $75,000 for a HVAC system at the old Hazelwood School. So the offset's about $175,000 on a project that we're going to have to do, period. Would you agree with that, Dr. Putnam?
Yes, sir, I would agree with that. $75,000 toward a building that has to be renovated.
Any other questions, comments?
That's where I was going. Thank you.
Okay. There being no, another, any other discussion, we'll vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
The third motion, Mr. Chairman, is a motion to proceed with the Tuscola High School softball field backstop and press box project. Estimated cost of that is $50,000 and will be part of the capital outlay budget.
I second that motion. We have a motion from Dr. Rogers and seconded by Mr. Kirkpatrick. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, Stephen.
The fourth motion that I'd like to bring before the committee is a motion to proceed with an RFQ for a design for a physical education expansion plan at Pisgah High School and Tuscola High School.
Okay, we have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Burnett. Mr. Burnett, any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor?
Any idea what the cost of that's going to be yet?
We don't, well, that's what the RFQ is for, so that we can determine the cost. And just so everybody understands, and Dr. Putnam, you please chime in, our physical education departments at the high schools has become so overcrowded and called such a safety issue that we're going to have to have some more room for physical education classes. So we want to look at expanding those facilities in order to facilitate safety and growth of those classrooms.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? There being none, we'll vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And finally, Mr. Chairman, Building and Grounds brings forward a motion to make the following items surplus. We have an activity bus number 8105, which is a 1995 international bus. Starting bid would be $1,000 for it. We have another activity bus, number 8106, a 1996 international bus. Starting bid for it is $750. It's in pretty rough shape. The last item for surplus is some Armstrong hardwood flooring, which is a residential grade hardwood flooring. There's 65 boxes, 22 square feet per box. They can go to the website and see all the details for that. Starting bid on that's $50.
Okay, we have a... I second that motion. We have a motion from Dr. Rogers, seconded by Mr. Kirkpatrick. Any questions or comments on the motion on the floor?
Is there directions and stuff on the website that they can bid on, that the public can bid on, or?
There's actually, each item is listed. If you go to Haywood County Schools homepage and go to departments.
It's in a drop-down menu from the home button. There's a drop-down that has departments. You'll click on maintenance and then once you click on maintenance, it'll take you into a bids and surplus link or tab, or I should say window at that point. It's a full window with bids and surplus on it. Anyone has any questions, they're welcome to call my office or Josh is either one for information.
Maintenance department guys, who would call Josh and?
They could call my office or maintenance. My office is 456-2400 and the maintenance office, you're going to put me on the spot, 456, I can't remember it.
10-2400, just call the 2400s.
Yeah.
2402.
2402.
2402. Theirs and Buzz's, Buzz always phoned me up. They're right there together. 2402, thank you.
Thank you for elaborating on this teamwork.
Yes.
So the public will know. Teamwork. Any other questions or comments on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all from Building and Grounds.
And now we have our finance reports from our chair, Mr. Clark.
Mr. Chairman, the finance committee reviewed the monthly financial reports. Everything looks good. I want to bring it to a motion to approve the, all the financial reports, please.
Okay. We have a motion from Mr. Clark, do I hear a second? Seconded by Mr. Nesbit. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. Next on the agenda is our recess back to our closed session. We are now back in the session. We have one item left on our agenda. Dr. Nolte, would you do our personnel officer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, staff. I usually say and guests, but I think we've lost our guest. Thank you very much. I bring to you the personnel that you discussed previously in closed session. For your information, under separation from employment, we have nine. For your information, student intern twos, we have three, and leave of absence, seven. For your approval, under employment, we have nine. Under employee status change, 93. Leave of absence, two. Contracted services, one. Substitutes, three. Employee coaches, 10. Non-employee coaches, seven. Volunteer services, seven, and contracts, 11.
It's time we entertain a motion, we approve the personnel as presented. I'll move. Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Kirkpatrick, seconded by Dr. Rogers. Any questions or comments on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, board.
Thank you, Dr. Nolte, and congratulations to you and Dr. Putnam and Ms. Barker. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's nothing else to come before the board? Meeting adjourned.